So we should be able to begin in about two more minutes, everyone. Is that right?
Yeah, or give it a minute. We already have about like twenty five people that are already joined. So we have a good crowd.
Alderman Martin is on his way. He'll be there in a second.
Okay, so we'll just wait.
Well, wow. People can hear me, I believe, right? Okay, well, great. I'm W. Robert Schultz, and we're just making another minute or two. I believe we have all of our Alderman participants here, and we'll be starting in just a moment, but I want to remind people this is our Active Trans Bike Week. We have a Bike to Work challenge going on and on our website. There's a lot of resource materials with regard to biking and Bike Week, and we have done some sessions prior to this, and they will be links to those recordings, those digital recordings will be online, both on our webpage and our YouTube channel for Active Trans. So I believe we have all of our participants here, and it's practically eleven oh five, which is our start time. So I want to say greetings to everyone. My name is W. Robert Schultz III, and I'm your host for this year's final installment of Active Trans Alliance's Bike Week series. Today, we're talking about building bike infrastructure with Chicago City Council. We will be recording today's event. It's already started, and it will be posted on Active Trans social media platforms later. A thank you to fellow Active Trans person Alex Perez, who is running the technical side today and did a lot of the groundwork and preparation for today's session. Also, if you have questions for our Alders today, you can post them in the chat. After their presentations, there will be a Q and A session. You know, Chicago with its essentially flat terrain and grid network makes it an inviting city to bike. However, as a resident of the northwest side of Chicago and Belmont-Cragin in the Thirty First Ward, I would bike more, but my community lacks connections to a safe citywide bike network that can be utilized by people from eight to eighty. This is an issue experienced by many communities throughout Chicago, and there are so many ways Chicago can become more inviting so that more people would find biking as a viable option for their mobility needs. Today, we hope to explore some ways to do so and how Aldermen are instrumental in their this process. Aldermen through community input, ordinances, city budgeting, and working with the Chicago Department of Transportation play an important role making sure Chicago streets are safe for those who want to bike. Today, we would like to highlight a couple ideas to improve biking for everyone and the Aldermen's reaction to them. That will have the bulk of the program be given over to three Aldermen who have been champions for multimodal transportation in their wards and on the city council. They each will have a few minutes to reflect on these ideas and developments in their wards and throughout the city. After I highlight these overarching issues, the Aldermen will have a chance to speak in the order I'm introducing them now. We are pleased to be joined today by Alderman Daniel Laspada, who represents the first ward, Alderman Andre Vasquez, who represents the Fortieth Ward, and Alderman Matthew Martin, who represents the Forty-seventh Ward. These are the issues and developments from around the city relating to bike infrastructure that we'd like to hear the Aldermen reflect upon. The viability of a safe streets ordinance that calls for dedicating a portion of local transportation department budget to building streets that are designed to assist or help the most vulnerable roadway users in mind. That is, people walking and biking, people with disabilities, seniors and children. Every year, the city engages in a budget cycle. We're about ready to enter that process, and that does have an impact on bike infrastructure. Some wards, like the Forty-seventh Ward, have made some progress. I understand that there's a new protected bike lane. Campbell, Roscoe, on Campbell and Roscoe from Belmont to Western. And CDOT is engaged in various planning with regards to bikeways, such as in my neighborhood Belmont-Cragin, North Lawndale, and Austin. So now I want to give the floor over to the Aldermen. They'll speak in the following order, and I'm sure there'll be some interaction between them, and after their each allotment of the floor for ten minutes in the following order, we'll go to some Q and A. So once again, I'll be pleased to introduce Alderman Laspada, Vasquez, Martin, and we'll start with Alderman Laspada. Thank you all for being here, Aldermen and participants today.
Thank you so much, Robert. Do I do I have share screen capability?
You do.
Share screen.
Yes, you do.
All right. Tell me, are my are my slides coming up, gentlemen?
We can see the slides. You're good.
Okay, brilliant. So really glad to be here. I have been a follower and admirer of Active Transportation Alliance's work for a long time, since back when y'all were the Chicago Bicycle Federation, but so grateful for what you do, in part because it has a very personal impact on my life. So I wanted to share, kind of, we all think about, like, how do we, as individuals, get around the city? And I really think my little orange schwinn and I make about sixty-five percent of my trips together. Probably another fifteen percent is walking. I'm very fortunate to live a half mile from my office, two blocks from a grocery store, very grateful to live in a really walkable community. Fifteen percent of my trips probably on the CTA. The first ward is blessed to have four different blue line stops in it. The occasional rideshare and then the even more occasional driving an actual car that we own, which I think is probably true for a lot of people on this Zoom today. We we own, we lease these cars that then sit unused in our garages or on the street for probably a good ninety-nine percent of the time. I may have gotten my license the latest in life of any current Alderman at thirty-nine last year, but it's it's, I suppose it's good to have one more mode of mobility available to me. So to talk briefly, like, I know that we're talking about safe streets and particularly bike lanes today, but it means making a whole lot of different investments. It means turning the prioritization of our public way essentially on its head. And we've done that in part through pedestrian improvements as well, but also looking, as we have on the screen here, looking at new ways to do bus infrastructure. We, in the first ward along Western, created specific to various pinch points, bus lane only routes that operate specifically during rush hour and really have helped move buses more quickly through the community. We're also doing a bus lane-related pilot project along Chicago Avenue to test, like, how can we move buses more quickly along Chicago? I remember when I was running, Robert, I remember when ATA put forward their their bus scores, and I remember how the first ward graded, and we are trying to improve our grades there. But what we're really here trying to talk about today is us as cyclists, how do we make this a safer experience for everyone? And bike lanes can look like a lot of different things. Sometimes it's the striped lanes that we've been able to get installed on California, on North Avenue, the ones that are coming to, I think it's Armitage in the next year. Sometimes it's just Sherries, like we have on Milwaukee Avenue going through Wicker Park for right now. But other times, it's the project that we were able to work on with CDOT over the first year or so of mine in office to create protected bike lanes from Western to California on Milwaukee Avenue, and then additional bicycle and pedestrian improvements from California up to Sacramento. And it was driven by a lot of data and a lot of community engagement, talking to cyclists, to business owners, to residents, because it is a it is a complicated thing to put in place. But at the end of the day, we were seeing a hundred crashes a year just on this specific stretch. And it would have been irresponsible to our city, to our ward, to our community not to act and act decisively in that space. And I'm really glad that we did. I'm so glad every time I get to see and have seen a mother riding a bike with like a two, like a three, four, five-year-old next to her on their bike. That is not something that you would be seeing on Milwaukee Avenue if it wasn't for the infrastructure changes that we had put in place. But it is complicated, and we wanted to talk briefly on that complication because there's the issue of parking. There's the issue of this parking meter deal we have for the next, still, I think, sixty-plus years with laws that requires whenever we move paid parking, it needs to be moved somewhere else. That was a complicating factor for us. The other piece of which is maintenance. So you can see in the middle photo here and the one on the right, we have to be vigilant in making sure bollards get replaced when they get broken, that CDOT is keeping up what they're supposed to in terms of street sweeping, in terms of shoveling. We don't want to give any fuel to those skeptics who believe that bike lanes are aesthetically poor for their community. So that's that's another piece that we find ourselves working on. The other thing is continuing challenges that we're facing along Fullerton Avenue, which is still a very underdesigned street for pedestrians and cyclists. The corner, unfortunately, at Western and Logan, where Kevin Clark lost his life a few months, a month or so ago on his bike, where Tyler Faebek lost his life about thirteen years ago. It's really unfortunate that we're stuck grieving rather than celebrating their lives, but I'm grateful in this moment for CDOT, which is putting together right now preliminary infrastructure design improvements that we'll be reviewing in July and hopefully putting in place over the rest of the course of the summer. That that is the work. It is unfortunate that it can take so long. It's unfortunate that we we've lost a lot of time in terms of meeting some of these commitments, but to see the city now with a new staffer full-time committed to Vision Zero, as Commissioner Biagi just committed to us, twenty million specifically for Vision Zero projects in the latest capital plan and potentially much, much more of that from that coming through the Biden infrastructure bill. There are a lot of reasons to be hopeful that we are finally getting serious around Vision Zero and Safe Streets and making sure that every mode of mobility is a safe and effective one for Chicagoans.
Thank you, Alderman. Now we'll have Alderman Vasquez.
Sure. How do you follow that? Thank you so much for that, Daniel. I am really glad that we have colleagues that are that are bike champions like Daniel. I am shamefully on the other extreme of that spectrum, right? So I've never learned to ride a bike. So if you were to put up my percentages, I think there would be a bit of a contrast there as far as the two percent driving. But what I do recognize, well, first off, we have been talking to the Bike Ambassadors as far as really bringing them up to the Fortieth Ward to do some of the adult bike education and lessons to kind of help promote that as well. So here's the what I understood. In order for us to move forward with a variety of different things, we need to increase our bike infrastructure, because it really does affect a lot of different things that we work on. And so just in order for us in the Fortieth Ward, as we've been looking at it, to try to get things forward and moving forward, there there's a challenge because you have three factors that we have to make sure kind of equal out of the Venn diagram. One is identifying the viable stretch of road based on its width and based on what we have in the Fortieth. We don't have as many of the wider streets. We do have Western. So as part of the Western corridor study, we want to make sure that we can learn and adopt some of the things that Daniel even mentioned was what he did in Western by Milwaukee. Another thing would be a funding source, right? So for where we have TIF, we're able to have those conversations. So we have looked at Lincoln between Western and Catawba, where we've been able to appropriate sixteen million dollars worth of TIF for a full streetscape as somewhere to look and set up more viable infrastructure. Now, because of the how narrow Lincoln is, that ends up being part of the challenge is how do you end up with a sidewalk wide enough that it 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 makes it more accessible for folks? It helps create more of an attraction for people to come and actually walk more and then figure out the bike lane. So we also brought up what happens in Europe and a couple other places where the bike lane is effectively part of the sidewalk. So we've talked to CDOT to see what the viability of something like that would be, because you do need the stretch of road, the funding source, and a supportive alder. And so we've been trying, we've been working with our neighbors to actually expand as much as we can. So, you know, where the Leland Greenway stretches, we're looking at West of Western as far as something where we can extend to connect to the river. We've also been looking at on Clark and Andersonville, extending it from right now where Clark and Ashen meet, there's a bike lane, but we want to extend it further to Devon and carry a throughway that way, as well as something that would connect from the river to the lake. So we're looking at either Berwind or Bryn Mawr as potential avenues to get that established. What we saw that was somewhat helpful was the shared street program during COVID. So it allowed us to really kind of create what the experience could look like. So we did create kind of like smaller lanes and slow down traffic to get people to wrap their heads around it. But I think what we've seen this this following year is that because it's only temporary, what it potentially does is it frustrates neighbors rather than shows them what is possible. So I think part of, you know, compared to the shared streets that were happening last year, I think there's only about maybe two to three across the city that are being implemented this year. So what we think is that there's a good use of the shared street program to kind of lead into more permanent infrastructure. So not saying, hey, we're only going to do it for the summer. We'll see you back next year. More of, hey, we're going to do this as a model for a number of months as we look at making this permanent permanent infrastructure, which I think can be a more productive conversation. Something where we've seen a lot of challenge and where we need help from supporters here is when it comes to housing. So when we're talking about affordable housing or adding density, especially in transit-oriented development areas, we still get the neighbors who scream and fight for their parking, right? They view it as such a commodity that it becomes one of the biggest, you know, pushback that we get when it comes to talking about any density. So what we need is the same kind of voices that have been uplifting this issue to also be vocal when we're talking about developments, when we're talking about streetscape and everything else. Because in the absence of those voices, those that advocate for more parking and they they want one-to-one per unit or more end up winning because they end up being the loudest voices in the room. So we need to make sure that every time we have these conversations that we do have the advocates for more multimodal infrastructure to be loud, vocal, and organizing so that we, as, you know, Alders can say, you know, we're hearing everybody. We have to make sure we have an agreement that accommodates for that. We also had conversations during the we've been talking about the federal funding and like future budgets, and something that had come up in discussions with like groups like United Working Families was a sidewalk utility fee, which was something that would help kind of address a lot of the sidewalk, you know, when they get broken. Rather than having neighbors wait for one day to be part of a lottery and hope that they can get a fifty-fifty coverage of the sidewalk, trying to get the funding for that. So I really like the Safe Streets Ordinance proposal because it actually expands way more upon that, right? You're looking at all the different ways to travel and making sure we have the funding for that. So I think in looking at it, the one thing I would the opinion I had looking at it is that rather than asking for the amount of like twenty million to set a floor, a percentage based on what you would want to see year over year. So there's not just an amount that, you know, loses its value over time, but that is indexed to what the need is, and you're ultimately getting that when you're talking about budgets. So, you know, we've been doing all that we can to try to expand as much as we can, but we do need the support in a lot of areas. And I need folks to to be present at the meetings to challenge us to come with ideas so that we can keep moving things forward, because in order for us to have the kind of world we want to live in where people are using less vehicles, we have less carbon and footprint in the air, where we're doing better things for the planet. We have to change the way people look at transportation, and building the bike infrastructure gets us there. So yeah, thank you so much for the support. Hold me accountable, so I will figure out how to ride a bike. Maybe not as well as Daniel with the sixty-five percent, but I'll put in the work. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. Just before I introduce Alderman Martin, I had to think about one of the youngest residents in my block. He's a toddler. He's just started to walk. He's just over a year old, and, you know, I had to wonder what type of world are we going to leave for him? And the things that we do now will impact the world he grows up to be. So without further ado, Alderman Martin.
Thank you so much, Robert, and thank you to your colleagues as well as ATA for hosting this terrific event. It's always terrific to chat with you all, but also collaborate with you when the the bright Zoom lights are not on. And my apologies in advance. I am not sharing a glossy PowerPoint presentation like my esteemed colleague from the first ward shared at the top, but you'll just have to take my word for it when it comes to a few of the issues that I'm going to highlight right now. So to start, we get, we're really looking forward to a number of upcoming bike projects, both big and small in the ward. And these are ranging from striping to bike-only signalization all the way to protected bike lanes, as was mentioned earlier on in the meeting. So to begin, we're coordinating with the Thirty-third Ward to strike bike lanes along Montrose at the same time as they, the Thirty-third Ward, do. This is going to go as far east as Damon before being extended to Clark, which is going to be terrific in no small part because we have both Horner Park as well as Wells Park that folks of all ages frequent on a regular basis, especially this time of year, and having those striped bike lanes in place, I think, will be a terrific way for them to be able to use that street alongside Bertow as well as Leland. Bertow is already a green lane. Leland soon will be a green way likely next year. Second, in our most recent participatory budgeting vote, one of the winning projects included a contraflow bike lane to Sunnyside. So specifically Sunnyside between Lincoln and Western with the bike traffic signal. Excited that that's going to be allowing cyclists to use a calmer route to connect to Solzer. Wells Park, as I mentioned just a minute ago, as well as Waters Elementary, just on the the western side of Western, without having to use Montrose and Wilson, specifically for those who might not feel a hundred percent comfortable using those modest arterials. It also connects to the neighborhood bike lane striped around Waters Elementary last year that was done in connection with our 2020 participatory budgeting vote. And I'm really excited that all of these projects were proposed by our office's youth council. It's one of the first things that we did when I got into office was to stand up this organization that is populated by folks who live or work, or sorry, live or attend school in the ward between eighth grade and senior year of high school. And so there are folks who have, I think, a unique perspective about what works well, but especially what works poorly, particularly around schools and other places where they frequent most often. And to be able to have their voice centered in the conversation around participatory budgeting has been extremely effective, and I think shines the spotlight on areas that haven't gotten the attention that they need. Also want to flag the fact that we're right now finishing the our first protected bike lane, which, as was mentioned earlier, runs from Roscoe west of Western and then curves down south to Belmont, and it will be featuring concrete barriers. We're also excited about the opportunity where this can increase bike safety in particularly a non-residential area because it's around both Lane Tech as well as DePaul College Prep High School. And but it's still an area that gets a tremendous amount of traffic cycles. We held a pop-up vaccination clinic at DePaul College Prep on two occasions in the spring and counted dozens of bikers who were using that stretch of Roscoe as well as Campbell for throughout the day. So we also know that there are soccer fields in that area that have also been attracting a lot of folks on the weekend. And then there are folks who, with nearby Clark Park, will use that, they've got a terrific bike jump course, and then transition over to Three One Two River Run, which is is great. I specifically want to note that we're really optimistic, if not confident, that we can encourage CDOT to use more appropriate crossings along the river on the Belmont Bridge, because as that protected bike lane open will will transition onto Belmont, we've had folks reach out saying, hey, that's not necessarily the the most bike-friendly street or portion of the street right now. We've heard folks there know that when we, when we're talking about expanding the Three One Two River Run and just making the the river area something that folks can bike on in a safe way, that part of that involves that focus on Belmont in particular. We also want to throw on folks' radar the fact that we're going to be working with both the public as well as CDOT on a few projects, like a partially protected bike lane on Clark between Irving Park and Montrose, which could be installed this year, as well as safer crossings of Western Avenue in the context of the Leland Greenway, which I mentioned. And it's something that's going to be coming up in terms of the broader corridor study that the PDE is taking the lead on that Alderman Vasquez mentioned earlier on today. Final things I wanted to mention. One, we are finishing up a very successful youth bike drive where we were able to collect over ninety bikes from community members that we're going to be refurbishing with the assistance of some bike shops and then handing out to specific families and kids in need as well as through nonprofits like the Recycler in Rogers Park and West Town Bikes to make sure that folks who are in need of bikes who want to use them can have access. So I will I will stop there. A lot going on in the Forty-seventh Ward as well as the Fourth Ward and the First Ward, and it's just a real privilege to be able to shine a spotlight on that with you all.
Yes. Thank you. Excuse me for that. My colleague Alex, I think, has been monitoring the chat and might have a couple of questions to put to everyone, and I'll pass it on to Alex.
Thanks, Robert. So we've been getting some questions on the Q and A, just for to get started with the Q and A. One of the first questions asked was what mechanisms would would need to be targeted in order to make slow speeds that default on residential streets essentially universal traffic calming?
To make it to make it uniform, I'm not sure. Like, I believe someone may have to correct me on this, that state statute states that like thirty miles per hour, unless otherwise stated, is the the residential speed limit. I can say when we've done bike infrastructure, that has involved lowering the speed limit, I believe, to twenty, which was the the smart choice for us from the perspective of, number one, you don't need anyone driving that fast, really close, that close to that sort of infrastructure. You don't need anyone driving that fast really close, that close to that sort of infrastructure. But part of the purpose of bicycle infrastructure is it forces you to slow down, forces you to pay more attention. And the idea was to create um speed limits. That along with our infrastructure changes led to like overall traffic calming. I know that can be frustrating a little bit when you're in a car, but we try to remind ourselves based, remind folks based on congestion. You're probably already driving twenty miles an hour on Milwaukee Avenue as it is. So I don't think it resulted in a great material change for a lot of folks.
Yes, if I may uh take a moderator's prerogative, uh, the whole issue of uh. Uh, what should be the speed limit, uh, the default speed limit uh for us in Chicago? And it's also an issue other municipalities are struggling with throughout the state. Is one of those issues that cau- uh cross between the city and the state with uh state law. And so if we're going to see some sort of universal change, uh, part of that is uh dealing with Springfield. We could do a whole nother town hall meeting on that issue and uh certainly it's a goal worthy of consideration. So I'll just put it out there that it's an important issue, but it's uh way more complicated. Then uh today's session allows.
There's another two questions that are very similar, so uh related to protective bike link network. How can we expect to have a full protective bike link network across the city when an Alderman can pretty much veto? Uh, protective biking if it passes through their ward. And then there was some comment about following Cambridge's footsteps by designing. A safe network and mandating that any new road work uh along the networks must include protective bike lanes.
Yeah, I can speak to um the protected bike lane network. I think that that's a a a really terrific point. And something that we struggle with in a number of areas, but I think the the transportation piece is a particularly acute one. Um, I think that one, it it requires uh supporting folks for election. Um, who recognize this need to view things in more of a a regional way. We're gonna reach out proactively to colleagues who maybe for any number of reasons don't have bike safety at the top of their transportation agenda, but should. Also matters who we put into the post of C dot commissioner as well as um senior deputies. So that we have folks there who are willing to be creative and forceful and necessary when it comes to making the pitch. Um, also helpful to have uh organizations like ATA and members continue to provide that grassroots support and pressure. To do the right thing. Um, at the end of the day, I I do think that it touches upon a broader piece of prerogative. That we're working through right now. I think there are ways in which prerogative have obviously has obviously been wielded in ways that are harmful. In ways both big and small. Um, but I think there are also, you'll also find supporters of prerogative, maybe not all across the board. Um, but some who feel that with certain city bureaucracies that aren't sufficiently sensitive to the needs of of. Of localities that the alder person is someone who um is uniquely well situated to to elevate those needs. So I think it can cut both ways on particular issues, including this one, right? You can have champions and then you can have detractors. Um, what I would hope that we can do is collaborating with all of the entities and individuals that I mentioned to say, when we're gonna do this. And we are gonna do it like that's a non-negotiable, that will find areas where there is both support and need for this. Um, to so that it can be successful, but when it needs to span more than one ward that um. That's just something that's gonna have to happen because I don't think that we're really laying the foundation for something significant. Significant and replicable and ultimately useful if it's just like you've got some gaps in here. It's like you're, you're kinda like my six-year-old son who's missing a few teeth that are ready to come in, but you're like, okay, well, I'm safe for a part of my drive. But uh right, but not another part. Maybe that's gonna mean I'm gonna uh drive or just avoid taking a trip altogether, which is not a place that we wanna be. So at the end of the day, I think we need to continue having these challenging conversations. And for folks both in our positions as well as you all to be able to say, look, if there's a consensus that we need to do this, let's do it in a thoughtful way. Cause we don't wanna be investing in ways where we're not gonna get the sort of utilization that this is supposed to, supposed to help bring about. Um, so making some of those common sense arguments to folks who are on the fence, I think can go a long way in ensuring that we can start to make these initial investments. And then once proof of concept is shown, which I'm confident it will be and it already has been in a lot of ways, and we can start expanding.
Yeah, I I mean, I I would add to that in order to accomplish a goal, right, which is a citywide network. Um, I think we should. Uh, this is one of those things where the decision-making should be centralized and it makes sense to have a mayor who would be on board to actually do that. I think you're right, the the conversations about automatic prerogative um do vary depending on the situation we're talking about. But when you're trying to create a citywide network of anything, um, I think having the executive branch be the one along with the departments to say. This is what it should look like. Here's what we're gonna do and actually move that forward. Ends up with a shorter path to get to that point rather than having a checkpoint of every alder to talk through. Um, I think we also have to see that kind of vision in that seat. And and the reason I say that, I I keep thinking about when we first were in uh COVID and started having the conversation about. What Share Street looks like when we looked at New York, where they were actively having citywide networks to be able to go from one place to the other. Here in Chicago, it was like, well, if certain alders want to try it in their ward, we can do a stretch here or a stretch there. And I think it becomes much more of a challenge to create a network when you have to get the many cooks in the kitchen that are then. Being responsive to their neighbors who say, I don't want anything different. Anything that slows us down is a hurdle. Um, because of just the way things have been kind of programmed as far as how we how we uh commute. So I think having that come from a central point also allows the city council members to say, look, this is something that's coming from. It's one, the departments, and this has been, you know, not from on high, but from the executive branch making that decision. Cause then it removes some of the pressure, I think, that the city council members feel in kind of being in between different communities when they're advocating for things. Um, I think to to get it done, you do need that kind of centralized decision-making for it.
If if I may share a little bit on this because I I s- I keep seeing like-minded questions popping up in our chat. Um, it it is all, all of these things. I I think it is both public and political education. But then it's public pressure as well. So Alderman Martin used that great metaphor around hi- his son's current smile. Because if you look at Chicago's bike lane, they saw that. Matt, it looks like our our bike lanes just went ten rounds with Evander Holyfield. Like that's, that's how. Looking at that smile metaphor, but it's, it's a lot of things. So we are, we are trying to do public and political education. Part of it is the public education that we're doing in this Zoom right now. How do we spark people's imagination? For what a comprehensive cycling and really comes complete streets network in Chicago could look like. Part of it is how we work, how the city works to um educate our colleagues for for lack of a better word. I I love the folks I'm sharing this screen with, but I know we have colleagues who may not have ever heard the term vision zero. Or or know what that means or seen the difference between what complete streets design looks like or could look like. Part of it is just helping them to have more of a broader imagination vision for what infrastructure in their ward could look like. I I think also though, a a big part of that is public pressure. It's the kind of organizing that's done in this space. With active transport with a lot of others, cause you do have to remember at the end of the day, most aldermen, most of our constituents. Make most of their trips by car and revamping our infrastructure, our public way. Um, is something of a zero-sum game. It does involve taking away from one use to the other. And so it is going to involve building public pressure, whether it's on executive leadership or ward level leadership. To get folks to understand how big a difference three feet of space can mean for the safety and effectiveness. Of cycling in our communities. People are gonna have to be pushed regardless of how we move prerogative around. And so, yes, it is so much about education and it is also the the work of raising your voice. In a really effective and organized manner to push for a broader um sense of what our infrastructure should look like.
Um, just a follow-up question that goes along with that previous question that was asked is what is? What is the political key to swaying alder who aren't as bike friendly? And I would like to add to that point too, and like what are some creative ways to, for aldermen who are bike friendly to work with those aldermen? Who aren't as bike friendly adjacent to their wards to making sure um the gaps are being closed with the bike lanes and making sure that protected bike lanes are. Kind of being put on the table.
Yeah, and I might just sort of broaden that just a little bit. Uh, if you know, there's, I I've just been to a couple of different communities recently, uh, both in Illinois and in Michigan. And it's true, our society is auto-centric, but also true for our urban areas like Chicago. There in Detroit, New York, there's a lot of downtown congestion and there's a lot of lost productivity just sitting around in traffic. So as you respond to this question, I'd like to see how you, what sort of appeals you might be able to put forward. And messaging that suggests to drivers that there is an advantage to uh multimodal with decongestion. And uh, uh, you know, um, the environmental impact and planning the world for. Uh, the youth like uh my one-year-old neighbor and Matt Martin's son that's six.
I think that's such a critical question and I think about it in the context of both the institution that we serve in. As well as the individual alder people who we're talking with, some of whom need to be convinced about the import of this. So from an institutional standpoint, I oftentimes like to think folks can be swayed at least in part by the opportunity for us to be a leader. On on one or more particular issues. So it could be, and I know that Courtney put this in in the chat, this is a safety issue. It's also an environmental issue. So being able to say, hey, we are first in the nation to do this. Or we are among the top ten cities in the country or the world to do X, Y, and Z. I mean, we've got kind of that that second city complex and I don't mean that in a in a pejorative way, but we we got a little bit of a chip on our shoulder. We feel like we oftentimes don't get the due that's deserved. And so as a result, we we like to see um. Uh, instances where we get the credit when it's deserved, especially on things that can bring us together. And I think that that's definitely one of them. Um, so particularly the piece about environmental work and how regardless of who is at the EPA or the White House at any given time. If we can really move stuff forward in a thoughtful way, an equitable way, I think that that's terrific. Beyond that, I would, I would say when it comes to individual alder people, listen very actively to what they care about. Or what they purport to care about. If it's deficit hawks, financial hawks, I think there's a particular approach to take with this. If it's folks who are really concerned about equity, there's another one. If it's folks who are concerned about public health, then there's another one to take. So I think a lot of it is around being sensitive to what folks um, what 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 folks say a lot in public. Especially at city council committee meetings and then try to tease out, okay, here's what's going on. Um, and I think a last good example, especially as we're coming out of COVID, folks who say we're really sensitive to the business community. Will emphasize ways in which this is supportive of our business community. The fact that it gets folks to uh go to other neighborhoods, but also be a little bit more expansive. And how they um traverse their own community. Um, and so they can live, work, and play within a particular place. And how that benefits lots of of the existing and new businesses.
Yeah, I think, I think uh what Matt said is a very crucial point as well. If you're looking at it from a support of a business district. You actually get more people to come to a business district because of the use of space, the amount of bicycles you can get in what is the equivalent of a parking space. You get more traffic coming in to support businesses by creating that kind of space as well. So I think it's absolutely something to bring up. Um, I would also to kind of uh in in looking at it, I would not necessarily say that there are. Bike-friendly or bike-unfriendly alders. I think alders are pretty much receptive to what they hear from the community. And if what they hear from the community is, we want more parking, we don't wanna do this, they're gonna go in that direction. So if they have equally loud voice on the other side saying, we need more of this, we don't have enough. And they look at the numbers of what they're hearing or what emails or everything they get in, that does move them more than anything. Because what is primarily the self-interest of any elected official is to remain in that seat and have the most amount of people be supportive of that idea. So I think, you know, uh, part of the conversation is reaching out not only to city council members, but to the neighbors in those wards. When these projects come up so that the decision isn't as simple, right? Like when, when alders don't have that equal pushback. They can default and say, well, this is what my neighbor said. It's not that I'm bike-friendly or not, I'm responsive to my community. So it is about building the relationships on the ground to have the constituents say, this is what we want to see and why. Which is a much larger education piece, but I'd argue that there aren't any shortcuts to getting that going.
I, uh, and I would only add to that, like, I know both the data proves that cycling is good for business. But we are, we are seeing that on the ground in Logan Square right now. I- if you look at Pilot Project, Navigator Tap Room. Wasabi, Concord Music Hall, I could go on and on, businesses that are adding bike parking. Uh, in front of their businesses right now because they know that that is how people were already getting to their businesses. Um, cyclists are good shoppers, they're good for your economy. Colletivo knows that so many places know it. Because it means you're not stopping to look for parking, you're getting off your bike, you're locking it up and you're going right into that store. These are things that again, like some folks have hard time understanding or believing. They've been given different narratives for a long time. We we are a city, we're a country that was car-centric for the last, what are we looking at here? Eighty years of our history, how we uh invested in infrastructure. It's, it is gonna take a push. Courtney, you're, you're right. I'm looking at Courtney's comment right now. You should be upset that you have to fight as hard as you do to come home. Safe, but I I can tell you, it is still true that power concedes nothing without a demand. And so it. Demand our public infrastructure functions in a different way for at least a time. That is going to take exercising and building power in creative.
Um, I'm gonna ask one more question that I felt like it's a good way to finish it off as it relates to kind of planning for kids in the future and safety. So Lacey asked a quite commented, my kids frequently write with me and ask why all the safety lines disappear at the intersection. Where they feel scared. What can we do to prevent cars from trying to beat the traffic light? Has this often seen the case in Chicago? Um, and create an unsafe situation. Is there any discussion about prohibiting left turns like Montreal does? And this will be the last question and then Robert will wrap it up.
I mean, practically speaking, it's about creating bike boxes at the heads of those intersections. So you'll see that eh on Milwaukee Avenue, at Milwaukee and Armid, you'll see it further down at like Milwaukee, Milwaukee and Grand. Where we, we create place of privilege for our bicycles to to keep folks from trying to make those dangerous turns. From an infrastructure perspective, um, uh, I know, I I know Courtney, like it is, it is. Let's say like we, we talked about this a a little bit of time ago with C dot. It is engineering, education, and enforcement. So a lot of our conversation today has been about the engineering. The infrastructure side of things. Then it's about education and we had to do a lot of that in my neighborhood. Hey, this is what parking looks like now. This is what it means to use the street wisely now. It is that enforcement piece at the end of the day. And we always hope that education and engineering, the first two pieces work so we don't have to go there. But sometime there, there are gonna be those folks who only learn through the enforcement piece of that. And so we're trying to use all three of those.
One thing I would add, and I think that this is as much of a pedestrian issue, if not more so than bike safety, but I think that they're connected, which is. Um, bump outs, both detached and otherwise, but other. but other ways to enhance visibility at intersections. Because I think through that as folks, especially on, at intersections that they frequent often, if they can get into the habit of recognizing that these are well-biked and well-walked intersections, hopefully there's some, some built-in memory that they need to respond accordingly. But whether it's bike boxes or bump outs or refuge islands, I think at the end of the day, finding ways to continue enhancing visibility of folks who are not in cars but still utilizing these intersections is is a way to both slow folks down, but at the end of the day, improve safety more generally.
Andre, did you get a chance to respond?
I actually still have to learn on the experience, right? So I, the one thing that again, I'm embarrassed to admit is my daughter, who is seven years old, could teach me a thing or two as she learned how to ride her bike. So I think as I get more feedback from my constituents at home, I'll be more equipped. But I think listening to folks like Daniel, I mean, that is very much who I defer to when I think about this as well because Daniel's clearly been thinking through it and has the experience too. So this is where I'll defer my colleague, who's the expert on that.
Well, well, thank you all. And I think we all have a piece of this. We all are experts in how we travel about. And we want to be able to travel about safe, safely, whether we're a pedestrian or whether we're on a bike or in a car. And certainly there's benefits to knowing that when I drive down that segment of Milwaukee down the first ward, I had to slow down. I I had to use a car recently. And I had to say, the slow experience on Milwaukee was much better than what I remember the fast experience was, where I was trying to abide by a speed limit when others weren't as careful. So there's so much work to do and I had to reflect upon as as I move on in life, how much things have changed, sometimes for the better. We're ending up Pride Month. Many, many years ago, there was no such thing. We've just recently celebrated Juneteenth when I was born. I was born in a segregated hospital. My mother had to drink at a separate drinking fountain. So things can change. You know, we tore out streetcars. Almost at the speed we put them in. So we don't have to be an auto-centric society that gets drenched every time we get a heavy rain that destroys infrastructures and homes. We don't have to be a society where we tolerate homelessness and we don't have to be a society that tolerates people being injured and maimed and killed on the streets. So if you want to get involved with this effort, particularly where transportation is a human right or transportation is a social justice issue, if you're not a member of Active Transportation Alliance, I invite you to do so. I also want to remind you that we do have our ongoing Bike to Work Challenge. And so if you or any of your coworkers or associates bike, and it's not too late to at least participate and get a couple of miles in, do so. We've all seen the destruction that the lack of attention to climate change can do over the weekend. Our brothers and sisters are suffering in Seattle and Arizona and throughout the world. So change starts at home and there's things that we can do. And we will continue to do those things. And thank you for everyone for being here today in this engaging discussion.
Thank you, Alderman, for joining us.
Yeah, thank y'all for having us. Absolutely. Y'all take care and stay safe.
All right, goodbye.